Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? And we do not have any public comments, so we will move on to presentations. All right, thank you. We have two presentations this evening. The first one, we will start off with our Diamond Award recognition, and then we will have a report from the Department of Instruction and Personnel. So I will present on behalf.
The district leadership team is nominating two outstanding educators tonight. Sharon Tweed and Julie Pacararo. They both serve as literacy instructional coaches. Sharon for grades kindergarten through fifth and Julie for grades six through eighth. Together, they have transformed how students and staff approach literacy. What caught my attention was their program D76 Loves to Read this past February. They motivated all of our students and staff to get excited about reading and passionate about books. The program took on a life of its own with the activities, spirit days, and the intentional focus of making reading enjoyable and informative, also an integral part of our lives. The positive energy was contagious among our students, staff, and the leadership team, who especially loved taking selfies with their favorite books. The recognition, or maybe I did, the recognition the recognition is shared by the leadership team who has compiled their thoughts about these two amazing individuals. First Sharon. Sharon's passion for coaching and professional demeanor helps to guide DLS and the West Oak Intermediate School teachers to new practices, explore new tools and resources, and keep students' achievement and success at the forefront of their lesson planning and differentiated instruction. We appreciate Sharon's kind, friendly personality and see her true sparkle when she ignites both a student's and teacher's pure love for reading. From the beginning of her time in D76, Sharon has had a clear convictions and knowledge about how to build literacy in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. She has introduced a number of important curricular and instructional initiatives that have contributed to a consistent growth in English Language Arts for grades kindergarten through fifth. She also cares for staff and families of D76 and used family nights and open houses to connect family with resources. She has truly helped to foster a love of, a love for reading in District 76. Julie Pacararo. Julie has done an exceptional job identifying practices that have led to instructional improvements that have enhanced student learning. She's also been instrumental in leading West Oak Middle Schools Professional Learning Community meetings and data-driven instruction and data-rich discussions. Julie has been masterful at forming relationships with our teacher teams and students. She has been an invaluable resource for teachers as they took to enhance their instructional practices. Julie brings great energy and knowledge to our team and teams and provides relevant advice and examples. Julie describes herself as a lifelong learner, and she is constantly learning and finding new ways to help our teachers and students learn and grow. Julie has been an outstanding addition to the middle school and District 76. She uses her ability to build relationships with staff so they will trust her coaching advice, guidance, and coordination. She has made every teacher and team she has worked with better and stronger. She is constantly looking for ways to stretch herself and grow in her own practice and also enhances our strong culture and climate in District 76 with her positive leadership attitude and energy. Tonight, I present our Diamond Awards to Mrs. Sharon Tweed and Mrs. Julie Pacararo.
Wants to go first.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And I want you all to know that this was from all of us, so. Sharon.
I just want to say one thing.
Okay.
I thought we had to. I just wanted to say thank you so much. It is truly an honor to work in this district with the administration, the staff, and the students. I couldn't think of a better place to work. Thank you. I made her go first so I could say ditto. But also, we are so appreciative of the support we have from all the staff and the district leadership team so that we can make fun things happen to just boost reading or literacy or morale wherever we can. Thank you.
So I'm going to hand the floor over to Dr. Cunningham, who I know has a strong team of presenters with him. We're going to start out with you. All right, thank you.
Well, we start with the best, so. It's a lot of humility in our department. So again, this is an exceptional team of people that are presenting tonight. Really, the Department Instruction Personnel is made up of literally every staff member and teacher that we have in the district, every coach. Just a special shout out to the principals who have become such, and they were already so, but have just taken on so much with instructional leadership in their buildings this year, and it's really shown. So we're going to highlight some things tonight. There's a number of different topics. You can see we're kind of walk through each of these, some relevant goals and priorities. And then we'll have some of our panelists speak on some of these elements like reading and math growth, coaching, the new math and writing curriculum we're bringing this year, what's happening with dual language, dual language programming, the instructional leadership teams work in MTSS program. We'll talk about what that is, and then some elements and personnel as well. So really, there's two of the goals and priorities we're going to kind of highlight tonight. The first one is improving student growth in English and Language Arts and in math. That's one of our goals this year. And we wanted to see every student make positive movement. And then the, and our second priority goal, number two, increase staff participation in the instructional coaching program. All four of our coaches are here tonight. They're going to speak a little bit of some of the work that they are doing. I will share first about our reading and math growth, that first goal. We have, we shared out that data on the winter. We are very encouraged by the direction that we're moving in. And there's a few reasons why we believe that is the case. Some of that is more strategic about identifying what skills we need to be, that are emphasized to be captured in some of those grade level-based assessments. I'll give an example from a math meeting I was at. I'll highlight Ms. Riley, where there was a conversation around they noticed there was a number of questions in the first grade standards that had to do with temperature and the thermometer, and that was not something they were teaching in first grade. So they realized it was a, because of our coaches' involvement in diving into the data, as the leader was able to spot, we need to make sure we're covering this pre-test because those are easy things that we can address. Tyler Smith, the same way, designing specific ways to prepare kids for assessments. All those things were very valuable. In addition, a lot of our coaches have, will bring in a lot of the programs you'll hear about tonight, the math and writing, but as well as what we've done at the middle school with writing, what we've been able to implement with F and P in our buildings. A lot of that is driven by instructional coaching. So I just wanted to highlight that. Our PLCs, our professional learning communities, have made a major shift where every week has a theme. It's dedicated to literacy, math, whether it may be student support or SEL. And that happens in a monthly rotation. The middle school does it on a biweekly. Those are heavily involved, coaches having involvement in that with data. And then we have very, we've decided to build, we had them, but we systematized our tiered interventions with very clear entrance criteria and exit, which was very important to us to make sure we're servicing the students we need to service. Lizzie Duffy played a huge role in that. And then the use of standards-based report cards is really helping strengthen the conversations we have about real, our students really understanding what we're doing. And I mentioned before, our principals have become an extremely active part of ILT. That was not the case in the past. But their voice at the table and their leadership in the building is what drives a lot of this forward. So instructional coaching is our first element. And we have five goals to this program. We mentioned student outcomes measured. We're encouraged by the positive correlation we've already seen this year with that. Improving our instructional practice. We'll talk a little bit about the ways they do that in a moment. Tyler will share out on. And then improving that culture of collaboration, reflection. That's what we recognized Julie and Sharon tonight. And then our data analysis skills have become much stronger. Every grade level team knows their data incredibly well. Both the STAR data and what they use on a biweekly basis. And we've had the privilege of being invited to those. Dr. Sherman Lewis and I are able to see a lot of those things in action. And this is really increasing our skills and capacities of our educators. It's amazing what we're seeing happen right now. So I'm going to invite Julie up first, who's going to share, just overview some of the activities they are doing this year as coaches.
So, excuse me. As instructional coaches, as you can see, Dr. Cunningham talked about our balanced literacy model, K-8 writing curriculum. Sharon and I have been aligning a lot of our writing instruction that happens K-5 with the 6-8 students as well. And we are all using FMP to assess our students with their reading levels and to target where the needs might be as we work with them. And we've also introduced culturally responsive practices. We are all members of the MTSS Intervention Development and Support that we help communicate with our interventionists and throughout the building as we see. I know that Vicky has worked a lot on vetting and supporting the implementation of the math curriculum by piloting with teachers K-5. Sharon has done the same thing with writing, next year's science. So we'll be looking at that as well. Facilitating the PLC meetings, especially at the middle school, we're a little bit different schedule than the K-5 building. Going over instruction, going over strategies, having teachers collaborate on things that work well for them and sharing it with the team. Looking at data reviews, data analysis, really looking at how data drives our instruction and the things that we can do to support our students, our teachers in ways that, sorry, to show growth within our students. And we also support our EL and dual-supported teachers. And we're not limited just to the K-8 teachers. We help everybody in the building, whether it be sped teachers, dual teachers, content teams. I know a lot of us have modeled lessons in classrooms. We work specifically with individual teachers for coaching cycles, helping with unit design plans. We've, at the middle school, pretty much at the end of that, and now we're working towards our learning frameworks. So guiding and assisting where we can. Basically, all of us do a lot of curriculum support. The middle school next year is looking towards the standards-based report cards, looking at our standards and how we assess our students. And like Dr. Cunningham said, to make sure that our assessments align with our standards. We are all part of building and district leadership teams. We're all part of the MTSS as well. Tyler has worked a lot with all grade levels on student target portfolios. Also incorporating technology into curriculum lessons. And all of us focus on engaging our students to be active, student, active learners. Next is Tyler, our instructional, or instructional technology coach.
Oh, I'm running it. There we go. Hi, everybody. We survey our staff once a year in an official instructional coaching survey, which is outside of our general surveys that we'll give individually as coaches to the staff and just kind of get feedback constantly for what works, especially Julie with PLC meetings, just what are we doing next and where are we going? Out of the staff that was surveyed, ninety-five and a half percent said that they seek support and interact with an instructional coach. The other four and a half percent, we do have a plan for talking with them. We meet with them at a meeting, but I'm kind of more looking at more targeted supports as we go. Staff receive support in things like coaching, co-teaching, coaching cycles, small group professional development, large group professional development, data meetings, which is one of our larger ones that's been a very major focus for this year. I'm very happy to see that staff has been really seamless about taking on data meetings as well as separating that into literacy-specific and math-specific data meetings as we're looking at our STAR assessments. Looking at curriculum development, as you know, we're taking on new curriculums, so that has been a big focus with coaching. Assessment developments, mentoring. We have a lot of new teachers who will access the coaches, and if they're not, we have coaches that are reaching out to the new teachers just to check on them and make sure that they're feeling okay in their environment. Resource training and supports, instructional planning, instructional practice and support, and MTSS, which we have taken more on to this year, so we're happy to kind of add where we can from there. We do a, we're tracking our coaching as a team this year, so we had prior to this year, different tracking systems, and we brought it all together. We decided on something called Connect Hub, which is a website that's run by Google for instructional coaches. Essentially, what this does is we enter in our activity, everything that we do with teachers, and then it'll give us data on the outcome. And then we use this data either with our meetings with the principals to see where we need to go, or we're really excited to go year over year on our data to see how we're improving. And then any growth or dips, just seeing where we have areas of opportunity. So if there is a time that might be slower traditionally in coaching, that's when we're doing special things like the Literacy Month, or we're adding a video. Hopefully, we show this video of us dressed as Bluey at some point for a STAR assessment. But you see coaches getting creative with, really engaging with the students and having fun and making it a fun environment. Okay, nope. That's what happens when I do that manually. Okay, so along the left side here, you see, we can see how many educators are engaged, our daily interactions. Looking at what our total interactions are for all of our reported interactions as a team. Seeing day by day what interactions are happening, mostly on days. You see Wednesday is mostly orange there. We're in team meetings. Our interaction types by month. And then we look at our, I'm moving a lot faster. Interactions by building and our interactions by department. Whoa, Tyler, okay. Sorry, interactions by department. Yeah, it's just going. Yeah, this, this was much better before. So these are our trending tags. This is us together as a team, so our balanced literacy model. General, what we all do as a team with engagement and data reviews and curriculum and student choice. Math-specific, guided math structures and visions, math stations, MyMath implementation. Trying out a lot of different math curriculums. Way to go, Vicky, in your first year. Technology, looking at EdgeClimber, Google Suite applications, taking a large focus on student portfolios moving forward, and a lot of teacher technical training within my position. And then, oh, see, I moved slower on mine. Yeah, this is just kind of the breakdown of everything that we are tracking throughout. These are tracked through tags, so whenever we're recording a meeting with a staff member, we are tagging everything and kind of seeing where each of our individual focuses are going. And then we hope to turn those into larger conversations with our administration to see if our focus is lining up with our data as well, kind of moving forward in the needs of the school. As you know, it is a kind of by-choice thing for teachers to work with us, so we have to be very strategic with what we're offering and if it's causing growth. Some things that we've been doing this year to add are, we're being very strategic about our coaching cycles. We've been a major force behind data meetings, professional development, resource training, curriculum development, and as Mr. Cunningham, Dr. Cunningham, I like to say, what's up, Doc? As he said before, we are, what did I say before? Oh, having more focused team meetings. So there'll be a meeting actually specifically run by a coach that's a focus and professional development that we ask the teachers, or is definitely something that we've seen that is a need for the school. All right, and up next, Dr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Yeah, that's a lot of great work to highlight there. So we've gotten ourselves back on a curriculum, we call like a curriculum renewal or refresh cycle this year after the the pandemic really kind of ended. It was time to really make sure we're adjusting our timelines. And so math was up this year for going through how we vet curriculum. And so this is, this presentation by Vicky will be just to give the board an idea of how we're going to approach looking for new curricular resources. Math was this year, very important purchase. They're all important, but math tends to carry a lot of weight. And then next year, we're going to look at science, and we're going to look at K-5 SLA resources to see how we're doing. But we have, every year, we'll do something in about a five-year renewal cycle. So Vicky played a huge role in facilitating, exploring that. So Vicky, come on up and tell us all about math.
All right, so this was a great thing for me to dive into as a first-year coach. But it had, we had a great opportunity. We started off our process for the curriculum refresh by researching and vetting several different curriculums, and we did narrow it down to three finalists kind of in the beginning of the year. We presented out on those three different curricular finalists to our ILT team, and then also in November to all of our K-5 staff. The next thing that we did was we surveyed staff after those presentations to find out what they preferred in the particular curriculums, and we were able to narrow it down to two frontrunners, into math, which was a Houghton Mifflin, and then in visions, which is a Savis. We then decided to begin a micro pilot of about six weeks. We were able to kind of get four of our teachers in. Two teachers were able to pilot into math. Two teachers were able to pilot in visions. We had a primary trial, two in primary, two in the upper, in the intermediate grade, so we kind of had a span. So we were able to get a true and accurate read on how these programs would look in those different levels. We concluded the pilots after about six weeks, and I gathered feedback from the teachers. I was then able to present out to ILT. And ILT then, based on the feedback from teachers, myself, who was able to really dive in, and I co-taught a lot of these lessons. We were able to decide and vote, and we decided on Invisions Mathematics, which is from Savis. Trainings have begun at the grade level already, and then we will be continuing this through May at the grade level meetings. And then we have a lot of fun stuff coming this summer. So Invisions Mathematics, the vision behind this, the vision behind Invisions, is that it is a research-based curriculum. It promotes the depth of understanding, of mathematical understanding that's needed for success and high achievement. It's organized solely around the, or heavily around the common core standards for mathematical content, so it will go seamlessly into our SBRCs that we, all the classrooms have set up. The goal is to achieve focus and coherence in a way that's best for developing deep mathematical understanding. And it also incorporates the seven standards for mathematical practice, which helps students to become more understanding and more confident in their math skills. It's a three-step instructional model, so it begins with a problem-based learning question that starts off, that kicks off each lesson. It introduces concepts and procedures with problem-based experience. That concept then goes into the second step, which is a visual learning. It makes important mathematics explicit with enhanced direct instruction that will connect to that first step. The final step in each of the day's lessons is an assessment and differentiation option. This uses informal and formal assessment to differentiate instruction through envision, or enrichment, intervention, and academic vocabulary focus. The staff and students that tried this program out were able to give us a little bit of feedback. We had some teachers, the, one of the teachers said, "It's challenging, but in a way that our students are capable of being challenged." I love that because it's so much where we need to go. And then our teacher that told me, she says, "I feel like this is working," and we always love that. And then the best was the second grader said to me, he said, "This used to be so hard, but now it's easy, and I like how to solve the problems." That is our new math curriculum of Invisions.
Thank you so much, Vicky, and sharing a little bit about that. So again, we will be implementing that in the fall. We're able to get that process moving. The middle school will use, be using the same product. They changed the name from Invision at that point, but it's the same series and company that works through same subject areas though that are taught through the middle school. And like we said, there's a very good, because we use the core to drive our unit plans and curriculum maps, we're able to use this resource really to increase the depth and the rigor of what we're doing. So while we did incorporate FMP last year, and we incorporated a new writing program at the middle school, K-5 writing was still something that needed to be developed. So Sharon Tweed's going to explain kind of our direction, K-5, and really how it fits into six to eight with writing.
I'm not as tall as my teammates. All right. So just like Vicky talked about how we went through vetting resources for math, we did the same thing with writing, but we had the blessing of piloting this writing resource for the entire school year. So we had lots of opportunities to try it and get ahead of any hiccups there might be, or figure out how to make it best fit the needs of our district. So I'm not going to go over all of those again, but it follows very closely to what Vicky presented on. With the writing mini lessons, they have a similar format to all of our other FMP resources, so it will be more of a seamless transition for our staff and students. The mini lessons have a clear and focused learning objective, so students are taking on bite-sized pieces of information and not feeling overwhelmed. They are very developmentally appropriate in everything they ask students to do. And the academic language is consistent with all of our other resources and complements the learning goals. I think something huge to highlight is all the mentor texts that it references in our lessons for writing are included in our IRA books or shared reading. So things are starting to complement each other throughout the day in the literacy block. Most importantly, the biggest feedback that we got from students and teachers is that students are engaged and empowered doing this. Writing is oftentimes the most nerve-wracking thing because it brings to the forefront every insecurity you have about yourself as a reader. So the students feel like they have tons of choice, because they do. It naturally lends itself to differentiation, and students are setting goals continuously through this writing resource and tracking their progress, which will also link nicely to the STPs. As a classroom teacher, the literacy coach probably shouldn't say this, but writing was always something that I was like kind of dreaded teaching because it was so open-ended. But the feedback we're getting now from our teachers is that students are excited about writing, and teaching it is my favorite part of the day now. That's huge for both staff and students. It, the, or a teacher also said it sparks positive conversations about writing. The lessons are engaging and help foster the love of writing. And the thing that, as a literacy coach, I love is that we are consistently talking about meeting kids where they are and nudging them a little bit at a time so that they can continue on their own level of progression. So one teacher said, "The structure allows me more time to individually conference and give goals." Students are comprehending their individual writing goals much better this year with the resource. So again, bringing that bite-sized language down to students so they can understand it better. Another thing to highlight about the resource is that it complements the Lucy Cawkins resources that the six through eight students are using. This is a writing workshop model, which is exactly what Shelley is using at the middle school. And a lot of the terminology is the same because Lucy Cawkins is, is the same publisher. So it does blend well together, and having now taught both different resources, I can say that I think we are setting our students up for success.
Thank you, Sharon. Dual, we want to give also, of course, a dual-language programming update and what's been happening. So I'll highlight a few things, and then we're going to bring Lizzie Duffy up here. Many of you know her. She's outstanding and supports all of our dual teams, and she's at DLS and does incredible work with all of our teams, not only in intervention, but also with Tier One as well. So a few things that we're doing in dual right now, the dual team is writing their standards-based report cards in Spanish Language Arts, or SLA, that will be launched next year. And that is using the new Illinois Spanish Language Arts Standards. They came out this summer, and they asked to be, they wanted all schools to implement them within two months, which is, no, thank you so much. It was a nice little summer present, but we've worked very hard. Teams have done a great job with it. Thankfully, Illinois did a really nice copy-paste job from the state of California, and we were able to kind of absorb some of that. But the Apple assessment we reported to the board a couple of months ago, grades three through five have elected to also use that assessment, which is based on the ACTFOL standards, which closely aligns with Illinois SLA, and ACTFOL is also recognized by the ISBE. So it'll just be about the timing of when we use that next year. The reason we give the middle schools when we do is because Stevenson High School requires that around that time of year, and it actually fits kind of well between our assessments. So we'll have that conversation of where we're going to place this three through eight moving forward, but we will plan to give this annually because it is a four-part test and can take four days to give potentially. We are looking at our progress monitoring right now using FMP Spanish. So similar on the English side, the Spanish side is what we've been using this year for our progress monitoring. Really, and we get down to our little, little guys. FMP isn't always what we use with the kindergarteners, but we are able to use that once they're able to read well enough in Spanish to be captured in that way. And then we were audited this year by the ISBE, and I know, a little spring present. So they actually just gave us a report back. When I wrote this, they did not, they gave it back, but we have to, essentially, they've got some things they just want more evidence of, so we'll provide that to make sure that we're in compliance. But overall, they really liked our teachers' lesson plans and how they're using that. So we'll continue that process. We switched this year. This is a big one. If you remember, one of the first things I had the privilege of doing was saying this stuff to the boards. That was awesome. But we went to a fifty-fifty universal, our universal delivery model this year, K through eight. Teachers have been reporting students are doing very well, and their progress monitoring of where they want for Spanish. We're not seeing lag there. And we're seeing, as, as we would hope, we're seeing better math scores because now our dual students were never really able to get math intervention before in the early grades, and now they can get it, and it's paying off very well. And which is why you saw so much positive movement in math, especially at the primary level, was not something they could experience in the past. So we're really pleased by that and what that's going to mean for us long term. Of course, our math materials that we are purchasing. Of course, our math materials that we are purchasing fully work in Spanish and English. So we made sure we picked a resource that will always allow us that flexibility. Uh, we have a new bilingual director stipend this year that came from two things. One, on our survey results, teachers had were always asking for more opportunities for leadership. And so this is a great way to empower um, one of our staff members, Rachel Johnson, into this position. At the same time, it is a requirement from the ISBE as part of how EL programming should be. So we were able to really tackle both of those. Uh, and then uh, our Spanish intervention, we've are adding to what we call MTSS, which I will talk about in a little bit. Now with that standards-based report card work and how that exactly is going, so the board can have a preview of what's coming in the fall and how we put this together in our dual program, because it's such an important part of dual. Lizzie's going to explain the process um, with first grade team and she's very humble and wanted to make sure the first grade team gets recognized for their hard work. Uh, but Lizzie gets to share it. So come on up, Lizzie.
Yeah, so I wanted to make sure that not just the first grade team, but the other DLS um, kindergarten dual team and second grade team um, get recognized because they really did. They did all, all the work on this. I was able to briefly meet with teams to help guide them or if they had any questions, but then I gotta do my job. So um. Thanks. Okay, so um, this sort of will give some insight as to the process to go about creating a standards-based um, report card and for dual language. Um, and I'm, I would bet that the other schools um, will use an approach sort of like this. Um, so what we did was we looked at the current um, report card that dual language has right now. And we matched, as Peter was saying, the new Illinois learning standards for Spanish, which fortunately were are like copied from California, which we've been using for many years. So that was, that was a pretty easy thing to match. Um, but then what we did was we asked ourselves, which, which language arts standards are not specific to either English or Spanish, which could be taught regardless of language. So for example, a foundational skill for um, this is just for the younger kids, but concepts of print. Same English and Spanish, you read left to right, top to bottom. Each, each time you point, you say a different word. Um, that can be taught in either language. Letters represent sounds, which are spoken language. Um, reading informational texts and literature, finding the main idea, key details, sequencing events. Same skill in English and Spanish. Um, and writing, just the process of writing is conveying information of the person writing and you need to adjust your writing based on feedback from others. Um, so then the next question was, which standards require mastery in just English? And in just Spanish. So English-only foundational skills such as phonics. Although there are similarities in, in many of the letters, um, as English being more of a um, not as opaque as Spanish, there are a lot of sounds like the vowels, the twenty vowel sounds that need to be explicitly taught in English. Um, whereas Spanish, not as many vowel sounds, but there, we do have the accents that exists in Spanish, which is a huge part of the, the core standards. Um, so those are taught separately. Um, writing in terms of um, punctuation is different. Um, syntax, um, grammar, those need, those are skills that need to be taught separately. Um, writing as well as in speaking and listening. So that was, and then we, and then they did all the work.
So I, and so they just give you a background of how those report cards will look in the fall, where those came from. Um, just a couple of other things in the dual language programs. Um, Dr. Duraca presented similarly to this last year, so we kept the slide in. Some of the strengths we have in the program right now, so we've had some great collaboration that you just heard from Lizzie on developing those standards-based report cards for next year in Spanish Language Arts. Uh, some resources are supporting the curriculum. Our teachers have said that they feel that over the, the last seven, eight years of implementation of dual, that our resources have become much and more aligned and you, and effective for teachers. Um, Spanish intervention, which Lizzie's a part of, Vanessa Nambu at the intermediate school has very targeted entrance and exit criteria they've created for who they're servicing. Uh, they're very, they're able to articulate exactly who they're grabbing and why they're grabbing them. Uh, and then the apple assessment we're finding is directly informing our instruction and student goal setting. That's changing the way that we're teaching the modes of communication. And we're building momentum with parent involvement. We just had our first dual language night in person in a while. In February, we had about twenty-eight people that came out. That's a great start. It was very encouraging from different levels, different grades represented, especially with our kindergarten families. We had a lot. Uh, and we had to do a lot of things to Elva Garcia with that. Um, in terms of challenges, it's always staffing bilingual educators. We have um, two openings um, for next year. That will be filling at DLS right now. And just to give a stat, that's not meant to be depressing. And I think in October this year in Illinois, there were three hundred unfilled bilingual positions. So this is the reality of where we are. So I'll talk a little bit about our recruiting practices later. Uh, but we are of course, um, really working very hard for the things that we, that make us spark all our relationships and culture. But also just making sure people know about us and our story is a big deal and very important to us. So we're, we focus on that. And then we want to streamline our assessments and tools we use to progress monitor kids. If kindergarten and first grader are using a certain tool, that fourth and fifth grader doing another, we want to align. It's uh, K five and K eight where we can. So uh, with that, I'm moving on to our instructional leadership team. It's an extremely important team that meets three times a year and does a lot of work throughout the year. A lot of decisions are made. This is a team of teacher representatives from all over the district. The principals are involved, the coaches are involved. And so the goal is to make the curricular decisions that are in the best interests of our students. We want to see higher level outcomes. So uh, we meet through, like I said, three times a year and we try to set the direction of a lot of our PD, the late starts, early releases, how we use PLC time. What's really our focus for the district and our direction um, comes out of this group. And it's a two-way conversation. And so Nicole Clement, who was an important member of that team, is going to highlight a few things that we did this year at ILT.
Um, yeah, this is tall. Um, so I'm just going to be echoing some of the things that were already said, but um, ILT has been very busy this year. Um, our coaches have been uh, guiding us through both a writing and math pilot. Um, I actually got the opportunity to pilot the writing program. It's been an amazing experience. The kids have been absolutely loving it. Um, everything that Sharon said about the engagement and just like the love for writing and um, seeing kids try things that I've never seen them try in writing before is really, has been just amazing. Um, Vicky has really dove in to our um, to all the math options that she gave us. She gave us a really great comprehensive breakdown of our options. Um, and I know a lot of teachers appreciated being a part of that conversation. Um, it's nice to not just be handed the materials and say, here you go, but also be part of the selection process. So that's been amazing. Um, and they've been very resourceful. Um, so thank you guys. Um, we've also, it's our first year that we've implemented our standards-based report cards. Um, so we've gotten to reflect on how it's been going. Um, and Dr. Cunningham has opened up the floor for just candid conversations about anything like that possibly needs to be revised. There wasn't a ton, but maybe just like small revisions that need to be made and um, a lot of positive feedback was given about the standards-based report cards as well from teachers and from parents. Um, Mr. Smith is working on digitizing our student target portfolios. I know the specials team at West Oak Intermediate um, has gotten to kind of put that into action this year. So that's been amazing. I know our third graders have loved getting to kind of share some of the cool things that they're doing in STEAM and PE music. Um, so that's been awesome. And then our next steps as an ILT are to develop the plan for next year.
Right, we will be doing that in May, developing next year's plan, focus on a number of our things. So one other initiative this year was the multi, multiple tiers or multi-tiered systems of support, really rolls right off the tongue. Uh, MTSS as it's known. And so we really needed to build a comprehensive framework of how we support kids, whether they need enrichment. They need reteaching, they need intervention. How do we do that K through eight systematically? So we can make sure our kids are, we're targeting our kids with the right intervention. So there's a bit of an explanation of there. Really, it's an umbrella that can cover academics, um, behavior, social emotional learning, attendance can go in there. And we have supports that we've outlined and created a programming manual that will be finished this summer. So really, there's four elements. What do we want our kids to do? Align the curriculum. We keep score, how they're, how that's going, and then we're responsive to our students' needs. So that's the idea. Our team has met a number of, we've met three times this year. We did what's called the RTI model. Dr. Duraca has used that term before. It means response to intervention. And that term's been around for a while. It refers to the academic um, tiers. We have our, you see our colors. We use red, yellow, green, a very typical way we do that. Uh, the decision rules, we decided this year of when does a kid get Spanish intervention versus math intervention or both, and how are they serviced? Um, the approved resources, we can narrow down really what are we going to agree to use? And then our tiered instruction matrix, which is a fancy way of saying, what do we do for kids at different levels? Then other things to note in instruction, we did update our website, which we're going to continue to update. All learning frameworks that are completed or being added, what that is, is it's a community-facing part on the website under instruction and personnel where every parent can see that basic outline of what's being taught in every subject for every grade. Some of them are up, the, all the rest should be completed by May this year and they'll be up this summer. So you can see K through eight. What's happening in every single subject area, what are the basic targets and what are the basic ways we assess kids? Um, so that's up there. Um, standards-based report card work, just to update the board. At next year for K five, every subject will be standards-based, that includes your art, music, Spanish language arts. Six through eight will be developing that for every subject. They completed their unit plans this year, so they are ready for it. We were able to send Mr. Peterson and Ms. Pecoraro to the Marzano Standards-Based Training this year so that they're on track with being able to help support our staff and our ILT plan. And I mentioned the curriculum refresh cycle. Our science curriculum is up for renewal this year. So we, we put it up for renewal. Uh, in terms of personnel updates, uh, and I'll share when I, I'll speak on behalf of personnel, but this involves really everyone on our district leadership team. Eric Rogers does a lot of this, even though I'm sharing about it. Uh, we've tried to level up our teacher recruitment. We've gone to just about every fair that we're able to identify this year and take data on what's effective, what isn't. Um, we believe a lot of what we're doing, so we've been strategically branding ourselves. Remember Hanson, our, Mr. Hanson was able to bring that, that award in um, for our communication. You can see this is a little bit of what our branding looks like when we go out. Uh, and we stand out, um, you can see the sparkle. So we get a lot of positive attention on our website. I think uh, Mr. Hanson shared that our career opportunities page is now our fifth most visited page uh, on our website. A lot of people are going to it, um, getting exposure to who we are. It's important for us to put ourselves out there. We've also gone to some online fairs, which has allowed us to identify a significant number of candidates. Like we're talking forty, fifty candidates for a certain position we would not have found otherwise. And so are we all competing for the same people? Yes. However, we're in the conversation, which we may have not have been before. So that's a big deal for us that we continue. Um, we're reviewing several systems for compliance in HR. Things that need to be updated. Again, Mr. Rogers has been essential in a lot of this. Um, both him and I are attending a lot of different HR groups that we go to on at least a monthly basis. We're on a lot of newsletters to make sure that we are staying in compliance for what needs to happen with personnel, extremely important. And we plan this summer to develop a lot of checklists, just to make sure that we are doing best practice and onboarding, exiting staff, et cetera. And um, you get, the board sees that we continue to have high marks and our staff feeling supported, which is a personnel element. So in terms of next steps, uh, we're going to complete the spring star assessments that's happening in the next two weeks. We'll reflect, we'll revise, we'll share that data out with the board in June. We're going to develop those standards-based report cards at the middle school, full implementation at K five in the fall. We're going to do those HR processes and then we're going to develop our eight, our ILT professional development plan for next year. So with that, please, any questions you have for myself or the panel, which I'm sure they'd be thrilled to answer?
A couple of questions.
Excellent.
Um, first of all, I, this was fantastic as always. It's, it's always wonderful to see these updates because it really puts into context all the data and all the hard work that everybody does. So thank you for that and thank you for being here. Um. The question I have is regarding on the standard-based report cards. Um, because I know for some parents that is new. Um, especially when it's implemented eventually in the middle school, I think that might be new for some families. Um, so my first question is how do you guys force, you know, kind of see that being addressed? The other question I have is because the standards-based report cards are based on the common core standards, um, will the, you know, dashboards like Power School have that available so that a parent, right now, a parent potentially could go in and see, oh, my child got an A in this, but obviously with a standards-based format, you know, we want, maybe want to say, oh, they got a three in X, Y, or Z. Um, just to kind of again, keep parents in the loop. Do you guys, does Power School have that? Um, is that just something, maybe I'm going a little too far.
Phenomenal question, yeah.
But I was just wondering because, you know, we, connection with community and with parents is obviously key. Um, and, and I think that after parents sort of, maybe those that aren't as familiar with standards-based report cards and kind of what the common core standards are. Um, my guess is the next question would be, how do I support my child? What can I, you know, what can I look at to say, oh, they need help in this area because assumedly the report card would be an average, like it is now essentially an ABC, it would be a three, a four. Um, so that was just something that kind of caught my eye. So I wanted to, um, just uh, ask that.
Yeah. Yeah, you want to hit your mic? No, it's okay.
So I just want to piggyback off of what you just said about the standards-based grades. Parents, I know will need a lot of education when their parent, when their child receives a three and very few of them will receive a four. Because Matt, it's like, um, you know, exceeding the, the, the um, the standard. So there's going to need to be a lot of education that the range of fifty-nine to ninety-three is a three, for example. That's quite a range and a lot of people are not going to understand like, well, how is my child really doing? And that, I just want you to keep that in mind because having gone through this myself, where I work, it's definitely going to come up.
Yeah, and absolutely will. That's exactly the case. I'll start, I'll, I'll try to give, the answer will end up being longer-winded, but I'll start with the middle. So if we were going to look at the middle school and implementing it, the way that we'll first write, we'll call them priority standards. Those are the ones that show up on our report card. The way that we'll word them is they'll be worded with the type of skill we're looking for. So for, I'll give an example. We've looked at a couple of district examples where all they listed, they'll say understands concepts of geography. And we find that to be too vague for our families to read. And so we'll word really, what is the priority skill in geography? We want those students to be able to address that we are assessing. So we'll start first with communicating it in that sense. The second step that we make is, well, there's a lot of, for the case of what we're saying is we, we can't, the, the, I would say best practice for what, what that is considered best practice to pan who you ask, is that we would just give the letter or the numbers for each of the skills within that subject area that we're going to cover for that trimester. And then we'd say not evaluated if it wasn't. Some districts, they'll average it and they'll say, okay, you got two twos and one three. And they'll average that to an overall score and it's typically at the request of the community, or the community wants that. Whether that's best practice or not. Then you can actually take that number and you can use a letter grade conversion table and convert. For now, I would argue personally, that's not best practice. It is, it's really if the community is asking for it, to use letters. Because it, you're really looking at the skills that you want to see and what's happening. So we would make sure that the way that we're writing it, that if a parent's coming in cold and they're not on top of their student every day and they just want to see what the skill is, they could see it in that way. We would also want to make sure each unit formatively assesses our student. So maybe if I was to create the perfect unit and our teachers are perfect, well, they're close to perfect, almost perfect. But you might have a form, you might have a pre-test. a formative assessment of the skill, another formative, maybe a third formative or sec, or maybe that's the end, and then a summative. And kids can track their progress that you report as they're working. And then teachers are able to communicate with, they're able to reteach students that might be at a two or a three skill. The challenge, what'll be easier at the middle school is the units tend to finish within a trimester. So you'll know if kids, the three might be where, you can get to a four, and the three is considered proficient. You are at target. That is good. And we have to educate that a four is beyond. It's typically an adaptation of the skill. At K five, we use end of year mastery. And so you could have a two all year, and you're really considered making progress toward the goal. But then it's a three at trimester three. And so what we're talking about as an ILT is how do we make sure we can, parents can easily tell? Because the Power School system doesn't necessarily capture it. It's almost like you need a graph to see we've gotten this far, and they make those. And so we're actually talking about how do we use our student target portfolios, especially if they're online, for our kids to, you literally shaded in and track your progress so that kids and parents can see, we've gotten all the way to the end of our mastery where it is, and then we are able to reteach. So Liz, like Lizzie can pull students that are not hitting the proficiency we're looking for in a particular element in the Spanish language arts side, because she can use the formative assessment to work with those students, if that makes sense. So that's a long answer. However, you do have to have lots of educational tools. The families, probably a lot of on-demand pieces, because families may necessarily come to your event. We're finding a lot of our videos get hits. I think Stephen and Kelly Olson made one a number of years ago on standards-based report cards. It still gets a lot of generated information, but we will. And we're talking at K five all the time of how we can be better with, if our families are understanding, if the kids are understanding. I'm not sure if that answers it, but.
I have two questions, and they're in two totally different areas. The first one is about dual language, and kind of touches back on that move to the fifty-fifty model. And I know that that is heavily tied to staffing and available resources. Is that something that you're going to continue to revisit? If you, I don't know, look into finding, you know, an abundance of qualified staff? Or is that something that you feel comfortable with as using, you know, to be the model going forward?
You know, it's a hard question. We really do want to continue to look at. I think it's, it's wise for us to constantly reflect in every subject area of, and every program to see if we're doing, we're usually utilizing our resources the best that we can. So yes, we would. Would we be able to make that shift in June of this year, like we had to do this year, which would not be ideal? I don't see that happening. We'd have to think a little bit more down the line, maybe a year out or so, at least to prepare for that type of transition. It's certainly, we've talked about it before. There's a lot of research that supports that full immersion in, in language in that way. We do think we found a really nice way that we are approaching it, where we're seeing by literacy, and we're seeing kids develop their skills in math earlier. So yes, I guess the answer is yes, we would continue to look at it and have those conversations pretty openly. But it just, it really comes down to what is the best way to service our kids with the staff that we have.
Okay. And then my, my next question really is probably more for Tyler or just the coaching team as a whole. But the data you were showing us, I thought was really interesting, the way that you're tracking everything and that you're tagging everything. And I wondered if, as you are looking back at the data, are the areas that you're spending more time on, like what you expected? Are they, you know, are you surprised by certain things? And is that kind of changing how you're looking at things going forward? And then can that data, because I think that that, the data you're collecting there is really fascinating to me. Can that data, or is that data being used then to inform like choices on larger scale professional development and things like that?
Yeah, and it's because of the perspective data.
Sure. Just, I want to echo Mrs. Vales and just thank all of you. I always think that when we get this kind of information and we're able to see everything come together, it really gives the board a more unified or more complete picture of all the work that's being done. So thank you so much.
And I'm sorry, is Vicky is your name? Can you pass on, like, I'm grateful to those four or six math teachers who piloted. I know how hard it is to add something like that to your plate, and especially the ones who did it like a second time to choose and vision. Just pass on gratitude, because I know how hard it is, and we all have very full plates, so thank you.
Mr. Hartman, I don't want to forget about you. I don't know if you have anything you want to add, but I thought I would open the floor to you. I just wanted to check. It's okay. You don't have any comments. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cunningham. Thank you, staff, for coming. You did an outstanding job, and I agree with, you know, what the board said. This is just, you know, even though the presentation itself was forty-five minutes, I know how much time and effort and energy you put in, not only to this presentation, but in preparing for it, but just all the work you've done over the past eight months and the past year. We haven't missed a beat, and I've said this to the district leadership team. I know Dr. Draca left doing some great work and really big shoes to fill, and I know Dr. Cunningham did an outstanding job of just seamlessly kind of filling those shoes and actually overfilling them. The buckets are filled with all the stuff that you all do. So thank you so much to all of you and all the people that you represented here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes our presentations for this evening. Hey, Mr. Hanson, I'm sorry. Did you get a picture of our diamonds?
He's going.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our business agenda, we have three items up for action this evening. The first item for action is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and are not controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board members, staff, administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda items A through D as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay. That motion carries. Mr. Hanson, can you tell if Mr. Hartman can vote?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I mean, it doesn't. Gotcha. Okay, then we, then we can just pass over him. Okay, so that motion is approved. And moving on to personnel, be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel item as depicted on the agenda, we have one new hire. May I have a motion to approve? Yes. That motion is approved. And then moving on to our last item on the business agenda this evening, which is approving the district leadership team contracts. Whereas the Board of Education has reviewed the contract proposals for the district leadership team for the fiscal year twenty-four school year, be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the district leadership team contracts for fiscal year twenty-four as presented. May I have a motion to approve? Yes. Okay, and that concludes our business agenda for the evening. Now, we are moving on to board discussion. Under board discussion, we have the twenty-three, twenty-four board meeting calendar. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Vada. The scrolling is like getting stuck on my agenda.
And I just texted Mr. Hartman to see if he can see and hear us. He said his connection is terrible where he is at.
Okay.
So we can just call him for the post-session part.
Okay.
No, there's nothing really I wanted to share. We just reviewed it. We only have, you know, following our regular schedule, we have one meeting in July, and then our one meetings in December and January. So those dates are listed. I believe the only deviation from our first and third Tuesday schedule is in July, which I confirmed with Ms. Hale, and then also May twenty-second, because I have a commitment on May twenty-first, which is a Tuesday. So if it's okay, can we have it on, you know, if we have, we have enough advance notice for all of you, if that's okay, to switch it to a Wednesday? Other than that, it follows the typical schedule.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you for that. And then we would move on to the three mobile information requests. We had one. It was fulfilled. Notices and communications. We have a seat all spotlight with information. Also, I wanted to point out that the statement of economic interest for everyone are due May first, so please make sure you fill that out. Otherwise, there is a, I think, a financial penalty with that. We also have a lot of fun D seventy-six highlights. If you want to go through it.
Sure, absolutely. So we have been notified that we will most likely be a finalist for the Great Places to Work. If you recall, that was the survey and recognition that we got back in September. So we were just waiting for it to be officially public in June, so keeping our fingers crossed. And that information and publicity should be coming out within the next six to eight weeks. Like I said, these babies keep coming. So we have Mr. Burco and Mrs. King, who is our DLS nurse. And so we've got two of those special announcements. And then the notification of our monthly parent university that's listed in there. I believe you all received the communication for the end of the year party, but just a reminder to please RSVP if you can attend. And if you can't link up to it, please just let Hiram know. We'll be happy to count you in. And then I know all of you received some type of special recognition this past Friday. Either you did or a family member did, that the video that Dr. Berger put together with her team of all of the leadership appreciation with the Community Cuddles Program. So that's a cute little video. If you just grab a little Kleenex in three minutes, and it's adorable and priceless. So those are just some highlights that we wanted to share with you.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Berger. That was like the cutest thing I've ever seen in my entire life. It was really sweet.
I thought one of my kids came back. I was like, did school end?
She just left. She backed.
Nikki texted me, and she's like, I thought I forgot. It was like a late start day. And then I missed, you know, my voicemail. So I'm like, oh, they're getting dragged back off. And then she shared with me her Ring doorbell, the video.
Oh, so cute.
So that was.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comments and petitions. Do we have any public comments and petitions on non-adjunct items? There being no public comments. Moving on to others. Do we have any others this evening? Okay, then we will adjourn to executive session for the appointments, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against a legal counsel for the district to determine its validity and for student disciplinary cases. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session? Yes. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.